See, we lost a parking spot to a generator.
I approved on what, Thursday? April 21st. Travel request for County Police Court, just as encumbrance of travel for $320.31. And put in place on that date.
This knock-cog session, Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the minutes for the knock-cog work session of April 21st, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Stand.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Good morning, Heidi.
Good morning. The financials for today include a supplemental appropriation for the court technology fund to appropriate your house print court technology initiative grant proceeds. Cash transfer out of the general fund proportion of 2015 funding for the Office of Community and Economic Development. We have travel requests for the Auditor's Office, County Police Court, the Probate Court, and the Public Defender's Office. Payment to course up for program costs for the property auto and liability insurance in amount of $340,218. And a payment to Ohio Cap for the state bid purchase of a Caterpillar 308E Series 2 excavator with attachments for the engineer's office in the amount of $96,650.
Glad it came with the attachments.
It's so important.
I'm not going there.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number 15-060, itemizing the financials for the meeting of May 5th, 2015.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next three items are just executing the contracts for our federal projects that
received federal funding for. You've already awarded the project to Ryan yet for all three of them because they were the best and lowest bidder for all three projects.
Do we have contracts that require a list sign?
The reason is actually to change, they have to give one copy to ODOT for the federal, the contractor, we keep a copy, so, and then we have so many copies.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the unit price contract with Ryanec Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Chigrin Road, CH9, section C3B in Cambridge Township in the amount of $416,624.2 cents. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the unit price contract with Ryanec Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Old State Road, CH6, sections B through H in Middlefield and Parkland Township in the amount of $712,217.40. The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the unit price contract with Ryanec Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Ravenna Road, CH601, sections A through D in Charlton Township in the amount of $704,247.16.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Good morning, Heidi.
Good morning. The next three items are just executing the contracts for our federal projects that received federal funding for. You've already awarded the project to Ryan yet for all three of them because they were the best and lowest bidder for all three projects.
Do we have contracts that require a list sign?
The reason is actually to change, they have to give one copy to ODOT for the federal, the contractor, we keep a copy, so, and then we have so many copies.
The County Engineers' Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the unit price contract with Ryanec Paving Incorporated for the asphalt resurfacing of Ravenna Road, CH601, sections A through D in Charlton Township in the amount of $704,247.16.
I'll make those motions.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I wasn't able to get an original.
Oh, good. Wow.
The County Police Court is requesting the Board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the application for authorization to permit the use of county credit card, ORC 301227, for Judge Forrest W. Burke, Judge David Alpier, and Court Administrator Joanne E. Monaco for a visa in the amount of $15 per month for the year 2015.
This is the same deal that they had last year, right?
Yeah.
I mean, it's just a...
Yeah, it's typically done in January.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Come on down, gentlemen.
Morning.
Yes, morning. Morning. How are you? Morning, Sheriff. How are you doing? Morning. Sir. You're not shaking, are you? Okay. You got this, and then you got this.
You had nine.
I gotta wave. They're still signing away.
I remember, there were three of each or something, right?
Four.
A lot of signatures in. Do you ever do a study when these were done by a typewriter manually, if we had its meaning? Or is the age of computerization cut down on paper?
The minutes were handwritten, and then we're hand typed.
Eight and a half by eleven sheets of hardened paper. What is it? You had to type hard to make it...
Yeah.
Because I found the hard copies in the files.
They probably remembers when they were chiseled with granite, so... Oh, scribe. Yeah, yeah.
We're almost exactly the same age.
A chisel is a form of technology.
It was a thing.
Stylist 1.0, what we call it.
We used to roll out the papyrus. I was there in Washington last week, and, you know, all the history and everything on the side of one of the court buildings down there, there was this following phrase, "When law ends, tyranny begins." I beg you with that.
Yeah, no, go ahead, go ahead. I can do both. Not well.
Okay. We're here today bringing forward a contract between Joga County and Summit County for the housing of prisoners. Thankfully, instead of spending money, we're working to bring money in. So, this is a contract very similar to what we used to have with Kylehug County, the arrangements we had there, except we have a new customer in Summit County.
How many counties, let's say, beside Summit here, do we have other counties? And we have federal, don't we?
We have federal immigration. We still do some occasionally for Kylehug County, although that is unpredictable. Just seems to be a steadier source of... You have to expand your market in the hotel business. That would be the best way to put it. And then that's when you avoid the faucet effect where you're fine and off.
I'm just interested in your advertising campaign.
We don't sound lost. It's just a word of mouth.
So, some county has this influx of prisoners that they're looking for a place to put them? Is that a constant flow?
More prisoners than room. And we have room, so we, $55 a day, same rate to use with Kylehug County. And they provide the transportation, etc.
The Sheriff's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the agreement for boarding of prisoners by and between the Joga County Board of Commissioners in Summit County.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Good morning. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute the resolution number 15-061, honoring Mary Ann Deach for her 19 years of service and dedication to Joga County and its seniors.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a nice day. Where's the dog?
She was over here.
Oh, she was here.
As soon as she said okay, she was like...
Just gotta know for your time sheet.
She was staring at me. I'm not sure what that meant. She already checked you out.
I learned something a couple weeks ago that Midge was in Playboy magazine.
I'm not going there.
The sheriff didn't get the gun. He put him in there. Playboy, just the dog. I can ask you about that story at some point. There's all kinds of tributes on it. Okay, we've got a couple of recognition items coming up. That's this one here? Yeah, sure. Jesse, do you want to come and say a few words?
Good morning.
Good morning, Jessica.
So, we have a resolution today for Mary Ann Deach. She is retiring after 19 years with the Department on Aging on Friday. She has been working the last few weeks training her successor, and is doing just a wonderful job. So, Mary Ann has been instrumental in the Home Delivered Meals Program. Hundreds of thousands of meals served to frail homebound seniors while she's been with us, and only over 1,000 seniors served. So, she's done a fantastic job coordinating the Home Delivered Meals Program for our community with all volunteers. So, I mean, she's just done a tremendous job. We have over 90 volunteers who go to residences all over the county to provide the nutritious meal for frail and homebound seniors. So, she's been a blessing and has done just a great service to our community. We'll miss that.
And that's a great program.
It is a great program, and our new food vendor is phenomenal.
Is it appropriate to ask who's replacing Mary Ann?
Yes, her name is Kristen Bibby. She came on, I believe, the beginning of April, so she's been working with Mary Ann a little over three weeks just to make sure there's a smooth transition with the program.
Kristen?
Yes, Kristen.
Kristen Bibby?
Bibby.
Bibby. Thank you.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number 15-061, honoring Mary Ann Deach for her 19 years of service and dedication to Joga County and its seniors.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Good morning. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number 15-061, honoring Mary Ann Deach for her 19 years of service and dedication to Joga County and its seniors.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
Good morning. The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number 15-062, honoring Benjamin Burke for achieving Eagle Scout, the highest award of advancement bestowed upon the boy scout.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Let me see if we have Benjamin in the room.
Hopefully, he's in school.
That's a certain, that's true. Very significant achievement. Not an easy thing to do.
The Commissioner's Office is requesting the Board approve and execute resolution number 15-063, requesting specified public records from the Northeast Ohio Area Wide Coordinating Agency, NOEDA.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Commissioner Reer?
Aye.
Commissioner Spillar?
Aye.
Commissioner Claypool?
Aye.
And the report I'll sign, and just keep up. Let's just check. All the signings going on. What troop was that? Benjamin Burke, yeah? Chastler?
Doesn't say.
190 in Charlton.
190.
Okay, on there. Doesn't say.
Doesn't say on the agenda.
He's got the agenda. He's got the agenda. Different Benjamin Burke.
Yeah.
around, if it's okay with you guys. Have a conversation about legal representation. It's not on the agenda. We had talked about having a attorney available to us, and the underlined, available to us should a conflict arise with the prosecutor's office. And as you know, we've talked to the prosecutor about this. He's okayed that process. There's two letters of agreements that I provided, and one from Walton Hethfield and the other one from Tim Reed, to make themselves available should we have a situation where there's a conflict with the prosecutor's office. And these are simply letters of agreement that allow that to happen, underlining the fact that they represent the Board and not any individual on the Board. And so, we'd still have to go through whatever process necessary to approve their utilization. Since this is kind of new territory for us, I would suggest that, you know, there's, if there's that thought in terms of modifying the agreements or whatever, to conform to whatever we feel is the appropriate limits, whatever you want to call it, then, you know, I'm throwing that out on the table. But I think it's important that we have somebody to go to, because we've got some situations where I think it's important that we be able to seek legal counsel without having to spend time trying to figure out how to do that or who to talk to. So, this just makes them available should we need them. So, any comment?
Well, I mean, there has been discussions, and there were some letters that I saw in the past, which had some problems with them, or I had some problems with them. The documents I see before me, I got this morning, I still have some questions about it personally. I understand that recently there have been conflicts that our statutory legal representative represents us, he also represents another party, and at that point in time, we have to go outside. I'm not sure that that's quite the hardship that we feel it is. It is a factor that delays the process slightly, but the delay might be an unintended or fortunate safeguard. I don't, I don't ever remember an occasion where this happened before that we had counsel at the ready for, to do this. I just, I don't have a real problem with hiring counsel when we need it, but when we have a question or an issue as maybe individual Board members. It was an occasion where I just paid the bill, it didn't burden the county with it. And what I'm reading, I'm not, I'm not in favor of approving what I have here.
Okay, what is your specific problem with what you're reading?
Well...
In which contract? Because there's two contracts.
Yeah, well, I highlighted some of the language on the first one. When I say the first one, the multi-page one, I don't know if we want to use names of these firms or not, but probably public record, so...
No, they're considered confidential.
Okay, yeah, it says Attorney Callahan privilege on the top, so I'm, in that second paragraph, "I will have primary responsibility for representation of the Board in outside legal and special legal matters." All right, now, then there's, you know, "However, I may utilize another attorney or legal assistant in my office, and I am also glad to discuss and to coordinate our representation of the Board with County Prosecuting Attorney, which our statutory representative." And not being a lawyer, it just sounds to me like that could be interpreted as us giving this personal authority over the prosecuting attorney. And I don't, I mean, the guy's there for a reason, he's got a staff, they're being paid by the taxpayer. We ask them, they give us advice. I, like you and everybody else at this table, has got an opinion that I didn't like, but it doesn't matter. What I liked wasn't important. I just, I just thought, well, that was kind of silly, what they had to say. And the only two occasions that I can think of, we got an issue pending, I don't know where the heck it's at, with mental health, and I suspect we're probably headed down the road with the juvenile probate court on a, at least, it's pretty obvious we have a, there's disagreement between us, whether it reaches litigation or not, I don't know. But other than that, I don't see a real need for it.
Well, let me enter this, okay? First of all, you're always more effective with a law firm if you have a relationship with them. So, if we, at a moment's notice, try and figure out who an attorney might be, should we have a conflict situation with a prosecutor, then you're not going to have as effective of a legal relationship as if you have a relationship with someone. These particular contracts commit us to nothing, we're spending no money, up until the point we, that we jointly agree that we have a need. And so, we're putting these guys in reserve, it gives us an opportunity to create a relationship with whomever, and actually, if we sign both agreements, again, it's not committing any dollars, it's simply putting, giving us a relationship with attorneys that we can now go work with. Let me use a very specific example that I wanted to suggest to you guys as an opportunity for us, and it will require outside legal advice. And by the way, Jim Flay suggested in open meeting, in open session, that this isn't a bad thing, to have legal advice outside of it. Each decision that goes through the prosecutor's office from time to time involves a political component, and sometimes we need to separate ourselves from the political components, we need simply legal advice, aside from any of the political stuff that revolves around that political advice. We have a very public situation going on right now with the public, with the probate court. From my perspective, it's, I'm not an attorney, it's hard for me to determine what the proper legal approach is, given the Supreme Court handbook, given the CCO handbook, given the Ohio Revise Code requirements, because we're required to follow the law. And so, we have all of this legal stuff that's swirling around us. I'd like an attorney to go to, the prosecutor cannot touch this because he's got a conflict, so that we can say, what is the legal underpinning for this? I would like to suggest we create a policy regarding the courts, so that we're on firm legal ground, and we need legal advice to be able to do that. And so, we have to have an outside legal voice to be able to undergird or to underpin whatever the policy is we're creating, so that it has teeth, so that it has merit, and so that we've done the right thing. We know by the public that we've done our due diligence, we've done the right thing, we've gotten legal opinion and legal input on it, so that we're on sound ground. And none of us at this table are attorneys, so none of us is prepared to interpret the Supreme Court handbook, the Ohio Revise Code, the various other resources that we have, so that we're on sound ground. That's my argument for that. Now, we can debate and discuss the wording and change wording and so forth. The contract you referenced, Blake, was very specific in terms of the situation in which that attorney reviews, is either when there is a direct conflict and the prosecutor agrees that there's a direct conflict and allows us that out. So, there's an exclusion in the contract that says, only in a situation where we've got a direct conflict, the prosecutor's office, would we execute that contract. And so, therefore, what the attorney was trying to say in there was that the person who is, we're setting the contract with, is the exclusive attorney unless he needs to bring in some other resources to handle whatever we ask him to get. That's what the phraseology in that paragraph is supposed to be addressing. So, I'd like to see us do that, how we can debate this, discuss it, whatever. We are going to have situations before us in which the prosecutor is going to have a conflict and simply can't give us advice, and I've already run into that half a dozen times. And it's very frustrating to try and get legal advice and not have somebody available to do provide that advice. And I don't want to go out and chase our tail, it's trying to figure out what attorney out there, the attorneys of bad attorneys, which attorney we should go to in order to get that advice.
Well, I certainly won't argue with you that nobody appears an attorney unless Christie's been going to night school. Okay. And you've had apparently discussions with other people here. I really, us entering into an agreement with these people is a contract. And I haven't got any concrete evidence that our statutory authority, Commissioner, or the prosecutor's office, has agreed or okayed this contract.
No, I think, I think what you have in front of you is two letters of engagement proposed from two different firms. I think if there's consensus on the board, then some sort of agreement, whether it's specific to a specific project, as Commissioner Claypool referred to, or if it's more general, ultimately, once there appears to be consensus, then we would want to have our prosecutor's office, you know, look at the document, make sure they're comfortable with that order.
I don't have, I don't have, there's a concept here in having someone to do this, there's some question marks as to what the pitfalls are, or what they, you know, I can't, I can't help but think that if I was proposing this, I'm not sure what the other two would feel about it. I'm not going to rule this out, I'm just not going to act on it until we see something from one or both of these that have the stamp of approval of our prosecuting attorney, because the last thing we need to do is run up additional legal bills. I mean, that's my position on it, you know, I'm one vote.
And I, just for whatever it's worth, I talked to Jim Flay yesterday about this, and he's, I don't say he's endorsed it, but he's okayed the process. He was here and actually suggested that if we feel, in some cases, he can't represent us, and therefore, we do need outside legal representation. And Laura has seen, not this version of the contract, because there was some discussion about the exclusionary kind of phraseology in there that says, you know, if there's a conflict, then you have this route to go. But we as a board are free under Ohio Revise Code to choose to seek outside counsel if we, if we think that we're not being well-served by the prosecutor, and I'm not saying we are, aren't, because I think our prosecutor's a good guy, he does good jobs, so on and so forth. But sometimes you have to look at the situation, and there are political aspects to some of the decisions we're making. And again, from my perspective, I'd like to remove those political aspects, somebody who's completely detached from the political side of it, and it can give us just legal advice, so that we know we're on sound legal ground. And, you know, if you're willing to entertain it, I would suggest sending these agreements over to Laura and Jim, have them take a look at them, give us their, you know, Jim can come and sit and talk to us about it. But... But it is a, um, we've had too many needs here recently. And I would like to get a, even this aside, legal advice on this whole concept of the courts in our budgeting process. We need legal reading on this so we know we're on sound legal ground. We can't make it subjective, Paul, because it's too important.
I, I don't have a problem with us, uh, conceptually moving forward with our prosecuting attorney's office to, uh, ensure these letters, uh, of engagement. And I'd say letters, meaning we probably will only have one, but we have two to choose from. I mean, I'm not, I mean, plural will have letters, two letters of engagement necessarily.
But there's no, there's no harm. There's no cost to having even two letters of agreement. If one guy's too busy to handle a load, I mean, I'm just throwing this out as for discussion purposes. We can have two because you're, no, no, all I'm saying is once you have a letter in place, at least you have two go-to companies. And, and I want to reinforce something. This is not for us individually to go chase an attorney to figure it out if, you know, if we wanted to pursue some personal agenda. The board, and we can build that into the contract, I don't know if that's in there, the board would still be the decision-making body, the board, not us individual.
I, I don't have a problem with that. I think, you know, we need to have a, an outline, a roadmap, so to speak. We have an issue, we owe to the prosecutor, we say to the prosecutor, we have an issue with this. He says, uh, that's a conflict for me and this office. You need to contact one of these firms and have a discussion with that. I don't have a problem with that. And then go forward based on a majority board decision, uh, to take that action.
So let, let me just throw this in for, to the discussion again. We've just limited ourselves as a board. We have the right as a board to choose outside legal advice. We don't have to go to the prosecutor. Our prosecutor's a great guy, I want to underline that. But we might choose, for whatever reason, I can't foresee it right now, but we might choose for some reason to go to an outside attorney around the prosecutor. If we built into the contract the right of first refusal for the prosecutor, now we've now tied our own hands. Now we do not have the choice to go out and do that. Unless we created, established a new contract and new agreement, whatever the case may be. And so-
If the guy can't do it because of, of a ethical, uh, issue that he's, he's representing a conflict, then what you just said is moot because he can't do it. And, and we're going to need someone. And, and historically, uh, I don't have a great history on it. It's only happened twice, uh, since I've been here. That we had to find an outside individual. I didn't see, I haven't seen a problem with it because the real issue has been the other side. The other side can't, if, if we've got a conflict with, uh, another agency or department in the county, they're also entitled to, uh, representation. And we can't tell them who they're going to get. They're going to get whoever they get, or they may take who the prosecutor has appointed. Off the top of my head, so far, one of those not representing us. In fact, not even in conflict with us. Has cost us over $12,000 so far, and I don't even know what the heck's the outcome of that's going to be. I've ended in, I've got no idea what's going on with mental health. But I, I do know that you can make two, two or three calls to an outside attorney and in no time at all, you can buy a used car. I mean, it, they're, they seem to tell you, oh, we're reasonable, until you open up that envelope and go, wow! I didn't think they were that reasonable.
Well, that's why it's important to have a, a known entity and not have to go out and take the first attorney off the street. Because you never know whether you get a good guy or a bad guy.
I don't disagree with you, but it has to have, for my vote, or for my, we're not voting on anything right now anyway, I don't think. But for my consent, we have to have more input from our legal statutory legal representative, which is the commissioner, or the prosecutor's office. I don't think that he'll send us down, uh, uh, the wrong street. I, I think his, his goal is the same as the, the rest of ours. Get through the day with as little headache as possible.
Right, and, and I'm fine with that. Again, I like our prosecutor and, and I'm interested in his input. But keep in mind, this board's responsibility is to the people, not to the prosecutor. And so if we feel that it's necessary for, for us to do something, put into place something to protect the interest of this office and/or the people, then we should do that. Aside from what the prosecutor's interested. Because this prosecutor might change. We've got an election coming up next year. Who knows where that's going to go? And so we might get a guy in that we don't like. Who knows? And we still need to protect the interest of the taxpayers and, and the interest of this board.
Well, we have, we have the right to do that at any time, uh, by majority vote. It's kind of like borrowing, borrowing trouble. We can all come up with some scenario. I'd say we take, this is good discussion. I'd say we don't leave it, uh, but we, uh, you, you, you say, you know, what you said there, I think, I heard you say, that the prosecutor saw this and signed off on it. I don't know that, okay? I don't know if Ralph knows that. But before I would agree to anything, I want, I, I, I have to have for my own comfort zone, uh, an opinion on it.
Well, let's forward it over to the prosecutor's office. Skip, they're, they're reading on it. Maybe they can give, Laura or Jim can give us their formal take. And Jim had actually, I kind of expected to see him here this morning. Because I told him we were going to bring this up, and he said he might be here, but, uh...
He keeps having those pesky crimes jump up.
I know, the dog and threats or whatever it is.
Tried to get him on the phone.
Let's keep this conversation on the table. You know, again, I'm, I'm feeling a little bit at a disadvantage personally because as I read through the Supreme Court handbook and stuff, I have nobody to go to to talk to about that, to get a legal read on that. You know, I can read it and, and from a common sense standpoint and with, you know, the experience that I have over the years of being able to read legal stuff, take some guesses at it. But I don't have the knowledge to be able to endorse and say, this is what we should do from a legal perspective.
I, I don't disagree with you. My, one of the, uh, issues that I had was documentation that has come to us citing a committee handbook that, uh, I think you were on the committee. And I'm not sure that that has any statutory license.
No, it's just, it's a recommendation, good practice, to try to maintain stability and harmony within the county.
In the letter that I read, it was almost implied, or at least I took it as implied. This is the law. This is what we do. And it's from the, I don't know, best practices, whatever judicial handbook or whatever the heck that, you was entitled to that. You were on the committee.
Well, I mean, one, one of the fundamental issues is the law says one thing relative to budgets. And the Supreme Court is opine that maybe some of that law, uh, needs to be changed. So now the question is, do you follow the law? Or do you follow what the Supreme Court feels the law should read? And that's why I think Commissioner Claypool is referring to the idea of having some legal, somewhat legal standing, kind of sort that out and come up with some kind of documentation, say, this is the commissioner's take on how we proceed, given that fundamental issue that hasn't been resolved black and white. So now you need a lawyer to step in and kind of give you their best guess on what's the proper course of action, given that little inconsistency there.
You know, we're reliant, we're at risk here to some degree. I mean, if somebody were to come to me and say, um, that's an unreasonable expense, what does that mean? I don't know what that means from a legal standpoint. I know what it means from a gut standpoint. I don't know what it means from a legal standpoint. I'd like to have an attorney define that for me and say, okay, these are your guidelines. These are your boundaries. This is whatever. And if I try to talk to the prosecutor, but he can't do that because he's got a conflict of interest, and he won't do that. And, and good for him that he's, you know, keeping that, that separation. But it, it creates a problem for us. Now, we can take a guess at it. We could say, oh, we're, we're going to do this because we think this is the right thing to do. Well, I think doesn't hold up in a court of law. And so I'd like to, yeah, firm ground. The decisions that I'm making are based on firm logic, reason, common sense, and a legal opinion that we can then defend. So, anyway, we'll keep it off of silent, Ralph. I don't know if you have any, any thought or input on it, so.
Um, just briefly, I, I think this is a real simple fix. I don't like the idea of have this, at the end of the day, this is going to cost taxpayers more money. Regardless of what happens, if we call to them, it's going to cost us money. I think the simple fix is this. I think that, um, you know, over the past almost three years that I've been here, I have seen time and time and time again of where, you know, the prosecutor's office is utilized as our legal entity to review our contracts, to review all of our different situations, um, you know, disciplinary hearings, what have you. I think that this is the perfect situation and opportunity for us to review this with the prosecutor come the budget, budget time, to basically say, here's what we, here's what we have on the table. We can, you know, at a rate of $250 to $350 an hour of what we're going to pay for outside counsel, I think we would be, I think that we would be making an, an irresponsible move to the taxpayers when what I feel that we can do is we can more than utilize full-time legal counsel within the commissioner's office to be able to have somebody that is specifically assigned, that operates under the commissioner's office, that reviews all of our contracts for Department on Aging, Department of Water Resources, anything that comes across that the prosecutor has to assign a special prosecutor, or that, that assigns a prosecutor for. We, we can, we can basically take that position and whether it sounds good or not, eliminate that position because they're spending an entire time doing that. So at this point in time, there's no conflict because that attorney works on behalf of the commissioner's office. So what we save in the, in the expense of what is, falls under the umbrella of the prosecuting attorney, we bring that person, and I'm not saying that we bring that specific person. I think that we, we need to, to put a, you know, a massive search, to have people apply, bring in somebody that is more than capable of handling a lot of the issues that has experience and, in various, in the various issues that we deal with. With A, our biggest thing is contracts that, you know, I'm sure that the, the prosecutor's office would probably be relieved to not have to deal with all that, all that stuff. So at the end of the day, we have our attorney that's on continuous payroll. It doesn't cost us anything more because we can eliminate one of the positions at the prosecutor's office. And that attorney represents us. We have a meeting every, every, every Tuesday. You go to any of these trustees meeting, there's always representation of a law director or somebody else. We never have an attorney here. You know, I mean, we do at, at occasion, but at that point in time, that attorney works for us and works to be able to review the contract.
And that's a very common practice, as you say, you know, in other parts of Ohio, in other forms of government, other states, it's a very common practice.
And at that point, we don't have to worry about trying to reach out. If you want to spend 10 hours a day, Skip, with, 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 with a legal counsel that's hired and paid by us on a full-time level, that is a reasonable dollar, you know, you take a, a, a reasonable salary for an individual that either A wants to downsize from being in a, in a firm that wants to be, you know, have a, have a, have a, just a steady, steady, you know, profession of being able to handle specific needs. There's a lot of good quality attorneys out there that, that would probably jump to get an opportunity like that. And at the end of the day, it doesn't cost us nothing. And at, at the end of the day, it's actually saving us money because every time we go into a situation like this, we're paying thousands of dollars. And at that point, we have somebody that represents us. We ultimately are responsible for those contracts that are being put out there, whether it be the engineer's office, whether it be, you know, soil and water, water resources, or whoever's producing these contracts. They're representing our, our best interest. And, and guess what? You can have a discussion with them. Blake can have a discussion with them. I could have a discussion with them. They could review things with us on a legal standpoint that unfortunately, our prosecutor just does not have the time or the resource right now to be able to give us that. So at this point in time, it's a budgeting issue that we need to bring up, I think possibly even sooner, to say, you know, here's what, here's, here's the position that we want to do. And I think if the majority of the board, or we get everybody across the board that agrees to this, to say, we are going to, to take the dollars and cents and put it into this, and we can relieve him of having to have that kind of responsibility. And at that point in time, we have it for no cost, no cost addition. And we can, and we can, we can fulfill every obligation and, and every question that we need. It operates for us exclusively.
You know, it's a good idea. And, and I'm, I'm skeptical. Somebody said to me the other day, uh, the nickname that I've earned is skeptical, because I'm skeptical on things. That's okay. I wear that badge, probably. It's the whole no-cost thing that I'm concerned about because sometimes you hire outside attorneys rather than employ somebody because in, in the long run, based on the workload and so forth, it is cheaper to hire somebody outside than to do-
But it's not, because if you look at the, look at the dollars and cents, Skip, if you, if you, if you look at the billing hours and you look at what the, what the, what the, what the cost per hour is, it's, it's a situation where, I'm not saying to look at it in that perspective. We're paying for that service right now for, for somebody-
I'm not sure that value will go away, so.
Well, at the end of the day, who, you know, we ultimately hold the purse strings, correct?
Yeah, we can't dictate, too, another elected official's-
No, I understand that, but I'm saying if we have to take the dollars to put into this to make it make sense, then, you know, we need to do what's responsible for the taxpayers.
I mean, I, ultimately, I would love to have my own attorney on staff. And so, I mean, I think it's a great idea. If the dollars and cents works out and-
I don't think this is a situation of trying to remove a position or not. I think it's something that probably, I can't speak for the prosecutor because I haven't had this conversation with him. But I think that this, it's, it's a conversation that he may truly welcome because it's got to be a headache for him to deal with this, you know?
I know it's a headache to deal with us, though.
I think it's a good concept to talk about it. And my question, again, goes back to the root of the whole problem. I don't know. I don't know if it's legal. I don't know if the Ohio revised code-
Yeah, I think it is legal. I think that Ralph was suggesting a good-
I'm not sure that, you know, I, I, I know that when you use the prosecutor's office and they make a mistake, they're responsible for it, not us. If we hire our own people and there's a mistake made, I'm not sure who's responsible for it.
But what, what does that mean? If the prosecutor's, does a bad fighting and, and, and we're responsible-
We're responsible.
Because we pay out of the general fund, so.
We're paying out of the general fund, but I don't want to go sleep in the Great Bar Hotel.
Well, because that's the reason we got the attorney, so. I mean, I, I think it's a good concept. I think we ought to explore it. I think we ought to put it on the table.
I don't have a problem with it, uh, uh, conceptually. I think it's a, a, certainly a, a novel approach. But I'm not, uh-
I mean, it'll save us money. But let's, let's look at it. I mean, I, I, I mean, if bankers are not working-
In the current climate, I think you're absolutely right.
My, my concern is with these whole-
Is there really enough work?
Wouldn't need an attorney, I would say.
Well, I mean, there's other things that we just, that we overlook, too, that, that, you know, whether it's, uh, you know, employee, employee issues, uh, you know, investigations. There's just a lot of things that we, we, we don't realize how much we task prosecutor's office for. And I understand they're there for that. But at the end of the day, you know, it's a resource that we can have in-house that, that ultimately, I think, can only serve the public that much better, serve this office better, and serve all the departments that need it that much better.
Yeah, is it, and I'm not putting you on the spot.
Yeah, yeah.
No, no, I'm not, either way, I'm, I'm, I'm actually thinking out loud, which I do a lot. Is there any other commissioners or any other county that has a model of this, that's done this, that we're aware of?
Of the size.
I mean, that's what I'm saying. I like to know-
I would bet larger counties do this, and certainly city councils do it.
Well, now, in the law director, uh, uh, example that he used, yes, if it's a municipality, they have a law director, or they hire an outside attorney. If it's a township, statutorily, I believe they use our county prosecutor's office. It's a, but if they're municipality-
They can hire an outside as well.
But they, they can.
Well, I think Bainbridge did.
Bainbridge has.
Bainbridge, uh-
Yeah, Bainbridge has. And, you know, I, I know it's a common practice. In other states, you have a, you have an elected prosecutor who just does the criminal side, which most people think that's all our prosecutor. They don't realize there's a whole civil side.
The civil side.
And in those states, then, there is an attorney working for the commissioner or supervisor, whatever they call, that is, you know, does their work, just as you're suggesting.
And that's why I'm saying, I mean, if you look at, I mean, it would be, it would be a conversation to have with prosecutor- to have with prosecutor to see and say, you know, how much are you spending for all of this other stuff that's important, but it's not, it's a situation where we're basically getting legal advice from them, but then all of a sudden, something happens, all of a sudden, now it's a conflict and we gotta go outside and hire somebody. I think that if we have it in-house, it's our attorney represents us 24/7. And then we don't have, and it's a, it's a huge benefit, benefit to him. And I mean, at the end of the day, you know, the communication and the relationship, you know, should be able to be, be, you know, a key building point for our representative to be able to work with the prosecutor's office on, on, on issues.
Just because, understand if you're, if you end up and have a certain relationship with another county agency, it may be your attorney versus the prosecutor's.
No, no, I'm saying if we have a situation that arises, you know, that they're, and they should have the working relationship to be able to communicate back and forth to prosecutor. If it's an employee issue, if it's something, somebody wants to take action, they're representing us, you know? If it's, if it's, you know, physician with higher ups in one of our departments, you know, they're representing us. At the end of the day, it's, I just think that you can accomplish a whole lot more with a whole lot less and not burden the taxpayers, and the availability is going to be that much more.
Well, I think it's an interesting discussion, and I think we need to move on. But the one problem that I, the final thing I'm gonna say, not that I get the last word, the final thing I'm gonna say is, it's just very, very, very unfortunate that we, in this county, find ourselves in this position, in need of this, these actions and this type of discussion, based on some extraneous, if you will, issues.
Well, that aside, and I know what you're alluding to, I think a little differently on this. I think the quality of what we're delivering to people in the county could go up, because we have somebody now looking at all the contracts. I mean, I read them, but I'm not an attorney, I try to catch the things that I can catch. And I'm not very good at it. But I think the quality, to Ralph's point, could go up. The challenge that I have is, one of the law firms has got a staff. The prosecutor's office has a staff. There are times when the workload, depending what you're getting into, requires more than one attorney to work on it. And so, you know, there's, there's always trade-offs on these things. And so you have more resources available if you've got a big deal that you're having to deal with. Having that, that staff and more resources at your fingertips is meaningful and worth something. Now, that's not to mean that our attorney, if we hired one, couldn't create a connection there. We could still have an agreement where they have a deeper resource.
They can employ interns like the prosecutor's office.
So, I mean, I think it's a good concept, I'm glad you brought it up, Ralph, because it is a good thing for us to put on the table and see what.
Not too sure that's gonna save money.
But, you know, I'd rather not let this rest, this is something we probably need to move along if we can. So, to put closure to it, let's go ahead and, I don't know how we'll pursue the whole concept of the employee, but let's bring that up with Jim.
Well, I'm gonna talk to John Lights at CCAO, who is an attorney, and bounce this idea off him, and just say, are there any legal restrictions? And if there are counties that are doing this, give me some context, so we can have resources.
Okay, I have no, I personally have no problem with exploring it.
Sure.
Looking at, I mean, I'm not ruling anything out. I just, you know, I don't know what I don't know.
You research.
We're gonna go into executive session shortly. I'm gonna do two quick comments, because we've got the public here, you guys probably won't be here when we come on session. I just took a trip down to Washington as a part of the get-together with the Cleveland Growth Partnership meeting with our congressional representatives. We are underserved in Washington, it's one of the things that I learned. There was two prominent things that I learned, a bunch of stuff that I learned, but two things that I wanted to bring up. First of all, the rural communities were not at the table pressing our interest. The urban community was at the table pressing their interest. Jim Renasi submitted a bill to raise our gas tax. And so, and I talked to him about that and all the reasons why that was not a good idea and so on and so forth. But the bulk of the people, the influence at that table, were from Cleveland, not from the urban areas. And so it's something to think about, and I'm thinking about how we can counter that or deal with that in the future. But if we're gonna have influence in Washington where the laws are made and how many people have said in this room, well, we can't change that, that's made in Washington. We can change that, that's our, those are our representatives that are down there in Washington. And so we're just not at the table, that's one thing. The other thing is, we did have a discussion or we had a thing on open checkbook. Yeah, Webinar yesterday, and open checkbook, which is a transparency tool that the Secretary of State is hooking.
Treasure.
Oh, treasure, sorry, the treasure is hooking up, which makes public information more readily available to the public. It's free to us, so we're exploring that. It looked like a good thing for the public, it's probably a little bit more work on our part. But it puts every check, every invoice, every voucher out online, people can drill down and actually see if you pay a vendor a particular dollar, not who you paid, when, so on and so forth. You can do all kinds of analysis, see all kinds of charts and all that kind of stuff. I'm just bringing that up for awareness standpoint, we are looking at that. And so that may be of some interest to people. So with that said, why don't we go into executive session?
Will there be action at the end of this?
Probably.
Probably.
Probably so, yeah.
The commissioner's office is requesting the board move into executive session for the purpose of discussing the discipline of public employees in the Department on Aging.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
And Jessica Bolt and Linda Verhany will be.
And it'll probably be lively.
Try again.
So we return from executive session at 10:15.
Do you have a preference on order?
No, I don't.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board accept the disciplinary recommendation of the hearing officer Lieutenant Gary Gervin and to suspend without pay Melissa Feroche Assistant Site Coordinator in the Department of Aging for 24 hours, three workdays, for violation of Section 3 of the Drug County Personal Policy and Procedure Manual under Conduct Page 3.2 and 3.3, and ORC 124.34, neglect of duty and unsatisfactory job performance, and to further approve and authorize the board to execute the Order of Removal Reduction, Suspension and Voluntary Disciplinary Separation Form for ORC 124.34 for the 24 hours.
Make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board accept the disciplinary recommendation of the hearing officer Lieutenant Kathy Rose and to suspend without pay Mary Ann Van Pelt, Site Coordinator, in the Department on Aging for 24 hours, three workdays, for violation of Section 3 of the Drug County Personal Policy and Procedure Manual under Conduct Page 3.2 and 3.3, and ORC 124.34, neglect of duty and unsatisfactory job performance. Ms. Van Pelt will also work under Performance Improvement Plan during which she will meet monthly with her supervisor and further approve and authorize the board to execute the Order of Removal Reduction, Suspension and Voluntary Disciplinary Separation Form for ORC 124.34 for the 24 hours.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Clay?
Aye.
Where are three submissions?
Um, yes, there's.
As they're signing, I'm gonna read the meeting notices. We've got on the 8th, the Whack of Finance Governance and Executive Committees. On the 12th, the commissioner can hold regular session. Tuesday, the 12th, there's gonna be a Planning Commission meeting at 7 o'clock. The 13th, the NACCOG meeting in Portage County, and they're not gonna be there. The 18th, the Family First Council, 2 o'clock. And the 19th, commissioners can hold regular session. The 25th, the county offices will be closed in honor of Memorial Day. And that's it.
What are we doing for Tuesday after Memorial Day? Are we closed?
That's the decision you guys have to make.
It's not on your side.
I was waiting to hear back, we brought it up for discussion, but I never heard anything from.
Well, you want to cancel session. I'm telling that, please, so, I, if you guys wanna make a motion to do that, to just cancel that meeting for.
How are we doing on meetings?
You're good.
And if you still have the Thursday night meeting, then.
But we can get a lot done, but Ralph's not here, so.
I used to say that to Chuck Cole all the time. He gets so much done, so much to happen.
Your buddy, but. So, anybody wanna make a motion to?
I'll move to adjourn.
No, wait, no, wait, not yet.
Oh, well, I'll move to do that and then adjourn.
Would you follow the conversation?
I'm trying to get you guys out of trouble.
We have a motion to cancel session for Tuesday, May 26th.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner Stone?
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
No.
Jeez.
I wanna be here.
Hey, you got a fee.
Before everybody leaves.
I need an adjournment.
You have a motion to adjourn?
May 24th, there will be a Coral Presentation called America at the Fairgrounds, 6 o'clock, private block, social hour. Of the Claret and Congregational Church.
What time is it?
6.
And where will this be at the Fairgrounds?
Probably the Junior Fair Pavilion there.
By the, where we have our commissioners' meeting, by the, was it the 4H thing? What is it? It's the 4H stage or whatever it is, right?
This is third or fourth time that we've done it. It's a great program, salute to all military, to America itself.
That's on the 24th?
24th.
That's Sunday.
That's a Sunday, right.
Motion to adjourn. I move to adjourn. I did that before, but it didn't count.